A'islam alaikum brothers and sisters. We welcome you to our town hall meeting. It's brought to you by ART, the Anti-Racism Task Force here at the Muslim Association of Virginia. We are Darrell Moore Islamic Center on Holy Road. We thank everyone for, you could be outside, swimming in the swimming pool or at the beach, but Alhamdulillah that you've tuned in here today. We have a wonderful agenda lined up for you. And those who have zoomed in, we ask everyone to mute your phones. I'd rather mute your mics. And later on, we'll have Q and A. At that time, I will call on people. There's down at the bottom, there's a place where it says reactions, where you can raise your hand. And at that time, I'll call on you and we'll let you unmute your mic. But during our presentation, I would like for y'all to keep your mics muted. Thank you very much. All right. First off, we're going to begin with a recitation from the Holy Quran by Imam Abdul Ahad Farouk. Imam?
Quick translation, oh people, we have created you from a single male and female, and we have put you into tribes and nations so that you could Inna akramakum, the most noble amongst you are those who have the most piety in the sight of God. Indeed, Allah, He is the all knowledgeable and He is all aware. And in another words, Allah said, "We have given honor to the children of Adam." We have given honor to the children of Adam in the way we have created and formed them and the way we have provided them with sustenance over other creations. Thank you.
Thank you Imam. A'islam alaikum again, brothers and sisters. We are so happy that you joined into this town hall. I would ask everyone to have their mics muted. And later on, when we have Q and A, we will have you unmute your mic and you can raise your hand to let us know that you'd like to ask a question. All right, so we have on our agenda today, we're going to begin with one of our brothers here, Darrell Moore, brother Omar, and he is going to share with you a story. Brother Omar.
[speaking Arabic] Upon you all, Allah's mercy and blessing. I would like to open with words not of my own, but words from the Creator of the heavens and the earth, all between them, Creator of all that exists, what we know and what we do not know. Imam opened up with these words, "Oh mankind, we created you from a single male and a female, made you into nations and tribes that you may know each other. Surely the most honorable of you in the sight of Allah is He who is most righteous. Surely Allah has full knowledge and is well informed of all things." In the Holy Quran, God teaches mankind, among many other things, correct etiquette. And I find it absolutely fascinating that in this chapter, after we are forbidden to be offensive and belittling to others, the Creator submits the aforementioned statement that equalizes humanity and invalidates any claim or warrant for one group to feel superior over another. Additionally, the diversity that has been established is a gift and benefit to humans. I certainly benefit from this diversity every time I sit down in front of a plate of pizza, dirt chicken, lamb kebabs, samosa, and dude with the red syrup. I know some of you guys know what I'm talking about. You could probably tell I haven't had dinner yet. Furthermore, in the Holy Quran, we are presented with a historical scene of substantial importance that our father Adam was a witness to. A being named Iblis, later to be known as Shaytan or the devil, was commanded to perform an act of honor towards Adam, which he declined because he believed Adam to be an inferior entity and exhibited pure prejudice. Why am I saying all of this? Because from the words of our Creator, it is very clear that race is a totally fabricated construct. Our Creator plainly states that the good nature of righteous or righteousness of each individual is the method to judge people, not by outward appearances. Then why as a global society do we act like it? Because on varying levels, our hearts and minds have been infected with the same psychological complex that led to the downfall of Shaytan. We cannot understate the traumatic mental impacts that slavery and colonialism has had on the world as a whole. Good thing about complexes are that they can be changed. However, a deliberate, honest, and uncomfortable reprogramming needs to occur when it comes to this false construct called race. Now, when I say racism, at this moment, I'm specifically looking through the lens of anti-blackness. You know what else is a totally fabricated construct? Whiteness. I know of Irish culture, I know of German culture, I know of Italian and Dutch cultures. There is no such thing as white culture. It is a modern and fabricated mechanism meant for consolidation based on nothingness. Blackness is a consolidation of default since we have been stripped of our tribes and our identity upon arriving on these shores in chains and shackles. African Americans largely have absolutely no clue what nation in Africa they originate. And being black provides a thread of identity and assimilation. It is interesting to consider that much of the hate in this world is based on false content. There is only one race, and that, my respected brothers, sisters, and elders, is the human race. Education, empathy, and support of each other as the distant cousins that we are is the best way for us to change the world together. Love is the antidote to hate. We cannot add fire to an inferno and expect benefit. We must distinguish the fire of hate with understanding and care for all of our brothers and sisters in humanity. We do not need to agree upon everything either. Our societal contract should be unconditional. Now, I don't have to be best friends with everyone, but respect and granting of equal rights and opportunities should be given at all times. Okay, buckle your seatbelts because here comes the uncomfortable and the honest part. To my brothers and sisters in attendance who are people of color, racism that black people face in America is unique and of an exclusive nature. To the ironic extent that some people of color are sometimes racist towards black people. Now, ain't that a blip? The discrimination and vitriol that some may have faced, or some Muslims or people of color may have faced in a post 9/11 world should have served as an opportunity. From my perspective, I said, "Well, welcome to my world." Then I thought, "Wait a minute, my wife wears a hijab and I'm Muslim too." So I guess that's double jeopardy for me. By no means did I ever relish or enjoy any discrimination upon any people. My point is to say, "Come sit down next to us and we'll tell you how this is about to go down" based on experience. The opportunity was for Muslim immigrants to see a glimpse of what their black brothers and sisters face and have faced for centuries. Let me repeat that, centuries. So you may say, "Come on, brother Omar, we're your family. We don't see things that way." Perhaps. But here is a rhetorical measuring stick. If I or an other African American came to you and asked you for your daughter's hand in marriage, you hesitate, would you reject it? How many times have you said or witnessed negative or racist comments about black people and did nothing to discourage or stop it? People of color are very entrepreneurial, and I admire that. How many black people have you hired? Do you do business with? Do you trade with? And not only sell to? Civil rights that you enjoy and reference whenever they are violated was paid for in blood by dog bites, water hoses at full blast, public hangings, many other atrocities that are too graphic to recount. When it is time to make Dua for Palestine, or Myanmar, or Kashmir, or Iraq, or Syria, and the list goes on, why isn't there one Dua made for blacks in America? As we know, the Dua of the oppressed is always accepted by God, no matter the religious belief. Why aren't Muslims doing this? Is the plight of African Americans not worthy to raise to the heavens? Is the African American condition in general not born and raised in Zoom oppression? Is this not systemic facade corruption? Do black lives matter? By all logic, all lives cannot matter if black lives do not. Make no mistake about it. We will continue to support, pray for, and donate to all of these people who are in need around the world. But as my late father said, rahmatullah alayhi, may Allah have mercy upon him, he used to say that one hand has to wash the other. Sadly, black people have been the intended target of a thoughtfully calculated social and economic exclusion. Without the in-depth history lesson, deliberate discrimination in the Homestead Act of 1862, where acres and acres of free land was given away by the US government to European settlers, as well as FHA mortgage requirements utilizing redlining has led to a substantial wealth gap for black people in this country that plague communities to this day while giving others a huge financial boost. This unjust distribution of economic resources by the powers that be is a contributing factor to the conditions that generations of the descendants of European settlers enjoy and the descendants of African slaves suffer through disproportionately. Systematic racism is not a shark. It is the ocean, and it runs deep. I mean, Ivy League schools such as Georgetown University was in on the enterprise known as slavery, Inc. But let me be clear. There's no other nation on this planet that I would rather be in. And I love this country. But the price of admission has been steep, and the rent is due every day we step out of the door. America is beautiful, but she needs counseling. And overcoming denial is the first step to recovery. We are at an inflection point in this country's history. And it is okay to admit that there are problems that need to be solved. There's a saying that goes, "Don't cling to a mistake just because you spent a lot of time making it." Let's make things right on a number of levels and see how much further we can go together. Diversity is powerful, and inherently in the Creator's human design for a reason. Now, do I expect you to completely understand the depth and breadth of what we call systematic racism, anti-blackness after this 10-minute TED Talk? No, I don't. Do I want you to walk away feeling sorry for black people? No, I don't. Do black people want a handout? No, they don't. All we have ever wanted was for America to keep her promise to all of her citizens. Same promise that has materialized for others. This situation did not occur overnight, and its dismantling will not happen overnight either. But if our collective fingers work in unison, we will pack a powerful punch. Recent historical events that have highlighted racial inequality via the callous murder of George Floyd has prompted the Muslim Association of Virginia to fund and assemble a task force to combat racism and assist with reprogramming our perspectives on a number of levels. And I'm thankful to be a part of this community that supports and values this need. This task force is not a fly-by-night operation and will become a fixture within the Muslim Association of Virginia. But we need your help and active participation. We intend on hosting a series of conversations with the community and as far as we can reach in the vein of social activism, education, or re-education, as well as the opportunity to hear the experiences and concerns of African American members in your community. The global outpouring of support and participation from our brothers and sisters in humanity is something that has never been witnessed before, and it makes me very optimistic. But this cannot become a trend that is a hashtag or the cool thing to do at the moment. We all must play a role in eradicating these systemic barriers to equality. Don't underestimate yourselves and the impacts that you have in your circles of influence, whether it be in the workplace, church, masjid, synagogues, or elsewhere. This task force will create forums and facilitate education, training, and awareness for each and every one of us to make meaningful change for a more just society. This will serve as yet another avenue to continue making the Muslim Association of Virginia community a beacon of light and a model to be emulated across the globe, Insha Allah. On behalf of the Anti-Racism Task Force, I want to thank you so much for coming to this town hall with open ears, open minds, and open hearts. A'islam alaikum, peace be upon you all.
You're not on yet. Check. Okay. All right. A'islam alaikum, Takbir, Allah huakbag. Allah huakbag. At this point, I would like to have the current members of the task force to unmute, and when I call your name, wave. If you'd like to say a word or two, you may. And then Dane Johnson, who's on the board of the Muslim Association, will give us the mission and the objectives of the Anti-Racism Task Force. So we've already heard from Abdul Ahad, wave brother Abdul Ahad. All right, for people who've come in late. I'm on the task force, I'm Sister Talibah Hassan. I'm the Vice President of the Muslim Association of Virginia. You've heard from brother Omar. And brother Ali, can you wave? Do you have a word or two to say?
No, Alhamdulillah, just happy to be part of the committee, the task force, Insha Allah. Ready to make some action, Insha Allah.
All right. Mubarak Farouk. All right, do you have a word to say?
Allah, I'm so happy to be here with all my brothers and sisters.
Great. Anissa Johnson. Can you unmute and wave?
Aye, yes, I'm here.
Good. Futrel Yassin?
A'islam alaikum, also glad to be a part of this Anti-Racism Task Force and hope to make some positive.
Can you unmute and just wave for a quick moment if possible? So when people see you when we reopen the masjid, they'll know, "Oh, I met him on Zoom." Are you able to do that? All right. Afra? Would you like to say hello to us? Afra Ahmed?
Salam aleikum, everyone. Thank you guys for all coming. I look forward to engaging with the community. I hope you guys are as excited as we are to learn about what we're doing and help us with all these mission and objectives.
All right. And then I think Keisha, Keisha, you're on our team, yes?
That's Omar.
Yes, Keisha is on our, and she's waving. And this is Omar's wife and his two boys, Alhamdulillah. All right, so now I'm going to Okay, great. Now, we're going to have Dane Johnson, who's on our Board of Muslim Association of Virginia. He's going to give us the mission and some of the objectives of ART.
A'islam alaikum.
Waalaikumsalam.
Waalaikum rohmatullahi wa barakatuh. Thanks, everyone.
Waalaikumsalam.
I would like to recognize Sidra Bangora. Sidra, she's also on the task force. Sidra, would you say a word or two and make any appropriate introduction that you would like?
A'islam alaikum, I'm happy to be on the task force. Thank you for the shout out.
Insha Allah, Insha Allah. Did I miss anyone on our list that is on the task force? I don't think so. So Alhamdulillah, I've been given this really, really tremendous task of leading this task force. The first thing I would wish to share with all of you, and you know, if there are any non-Muslim persons joining us, as I think there might be, we welcome your input and feedback as well. And this point I will make, you can share as well. The first thing, and the first priority that I think I would like to ask all of the people to do is please make Dua for us every day, every prayer, whatever you can do. This is the most powerful thing that you can do to ask Allah's help for us. Ask Allah to give us strength. Ask Allah to give us courage. Ask Allah to give us Sabr. And these are the most important things that I think all of us can do right at the top because we know everything is from Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Now, on that note, I'm going to share my screen with you to talk about a few things that the task force has established. We've been working for a few weeks to establish some groundwork, so let me go ahead and do that. So. Share. Okay, so. So the task force, I'm going to leave this in this form because of technical reasons. The task force established a preamble which states "This task force is an institutional foundation and mechanism within MAP to combat anti-black racism specifically and all aspects of racism in general." Our mission statement is to combat anti-blackness, prejudice, discrimination, oppression, and all aspects of racism within the Muslim community as well as in the wider society, promoting equity and justice. Now, some of these objectives may change slightly because we may be consolidating a little bit. But some of these objectives, I'll make it a little bit bigger perhaps. Let's see. Is that a little better? Okay. So the first one, we have to facilitate understanding of anti-blackness and racism through educational programming for both Muslims and non-Muslims. To foster awareness of the deep impact of colonialism across the globe and specifically towards the perception of black people. To promote action and activism through policies, partnerships, protests, and demonstrations. To create space for black Muslims within MAP that encourages full participation at all levels. To work on dismantling systemic racism at the local, state, and federal levels. To work with legislators on reimagining public safety and policing of the future that will best serve all people equally. And the duty to develop to develop all necessary programs, activities, projects, et cetera, includes the task force, the imams, the board, and the MAP community. Okay. See, I'll stop the share now. So those are a few points of what we raised as some of the focus of the task force. And as I want to restate and reiterate what our brother Omar mentioned. And although my brother Ali didn't invent this term, he kind of was the one who coined it for us in the task force. And I remember at the night vigil over by the county supervisor, I used it in a speech to talk to people. MAP and MAP Anti-Task Force, we are in this for the marathon, not the sprint. It may be that putting on programs that are gaudy and attractive and has a lot of show to them is something that many people will do. And we may do it as well, but the bottom line for us is focusing upon kind of digging in and going step by step to try to work towards the dismantling of racism, and particularly and especially anti-blackness. Okay? As a black American myself, a few of you have heard just recently some of my stories of things that I have experienced. I must say that it has been very difficult for me because I said, "How will I be able to present this to our Ummah?" How can we bring this message to people without people feeling, "Oh, why are you elevating black people above everyone else at this point? Why are only their problems the ones that should be concerned?" I think as brother Omar eloquently put it, "The sacrifices that African slaves made and our descendants made here in this country helped pave the way for civil rights for people of color all around and for all people." Even if, there's no such thing as non-color, but of all people. So we ask for people's, as he said, empathy, not sympathy. We want people to feel what it means. We hope that this task force will focus on educating all of us about some of the experiences and some of the trials and some of the difficulties that being black meant in this country and has meant in this country. And thereby using that as a mechanism to free us. As a person, as an individual, I find that this time is an opportunity for catharsis, not only for us African Americans, but for all Americans. The catharsis is this racism that we've been walking around with against, on anti-blackness, has been on our shoulders and chained to us every day of the week, every hour of the day, and every month of the year. We walk around with it on us. Very few of you have heard me recount racist incidents that I've encountered in the time that I've been with Muslim Association of Virginia, all the way since 2000. I think few of you will ever say, "Brother Dane, all he focuses on is racism against black people." Never been something that I've brought up because as Omar said, we don't want anyone to feel sorry for us. We just want people to join in with us and to help us get our Just Do, justice from the Quran, as the Quran says. In that way, justice will be gained for everyone because our expectation would be whatever justice we get, we want as blacks and as African Americans to see that justice to everyone. White, black, brown. My daughter says I can't say red and yellow because it's not politically correct, I think, or something. But every color that's out there, whatever color people think they are. So we ask that you make a commitment in a small measure or a large measure, whatever is within your capability, to help us in this path. There is so much work to do that I will tell you. I went, I've gone to bed many I went, I've gone to bed many nights crying because I feared that I would not be able to take this task. I would not be able to shoulder the burden of all the kinds of difficulties that are before us. But inshallah, we'll take one step at a time. With your support and help, we will continue. Let me say a few things about that support. The Muslim Association of Virginia has been an exemplary organization. If you go around and look, maybe in the country, I don't know, I haven't surveyed, but definitely in Virginia, I don't think anyone's board is diverse as our board. Okay, Sister Talibah and myself, we have served on the board since the beginning, since before there was a board, when it was just an executive committee. Mav has always been open to us, okay? So this is not get everybody in Mav and make Mav get rid of all this racism. That's what this is not. Mav has been the leader and we expect that this will continue to help the leadership of Mav. Mav in many aspects has been the point of the sword in, 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 in Virginia. And in Virginia and helping throughout the country, people hearing and knowing of what we are doing. That's not our intention in this project, that's not our focus and our goal, but it may be a consequence of the actions that we take. Okay, so Mav already starts with a really good record. What we want to do is we want to bring that record, we want to bring this awareness to people so that we can continue these fights and continue this opportunity to get some justice for our black brothers and sisters. On that note, I would say to you again, we appreciate the support that you've given us coming into this forum. I will turn it over now to Sister Talibah to open up the dialogue for any questions and answers, observations that the community, town hall folks may have. Jazakumullah khair, alhamdulillahi rabbil alameen.
Thank you. Allah hu akbar. Yeah, can I not, can you, no, yes?
You're just breaking up just a little.
Breaking, is it better? Unmuted self. So, doesn't seem to wanna move, you can hear me as long as, alright. So, thank you very much, Brother Dane. And we're now gonna go to Q and A, and before we go to Q and A, I would like to just acknowledge some other board members who are present today and we, we thank you very much for coming. So, Mohammed Usman, can you wave to us? Alright, we have, we had Mirza on here. Mirza Beg, are you on here still? Can you wave to us?
Yes, I'm waving right now while driving.
Okay, and then the president of the Muslim Association of Virginia, my boss. Alright, all good ideas come from him. Rafi Ahmed, because he's prez, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give him a minute to give us some greetings and good words.
Salaam alaikum everyone.
Waalaikum salam.
The only reason I dialed in is because somebody told me that we were gonna have food, so where's the food?
It's virtual, use your imagination.
It's virtual.
Oh my god, okay. So, thank you everyone, everyone that, who is part of this task force. Your leadership is very much needed and appreciated. Unfortunate times that we live in right now in this, in our country and in our world, there's a lot of inequalities that, you know, are, we are facing. Islam is a solution for a lot of these inequalities and Islam teaches us how we should treat each other as a Muslim brothers and sisters. Not only Muslim brothers and sisters, but brothers and sisters in humanity, right? So, I think we have a lot to offer as Muslims and I think we need to work with our neighbors and our colleagues and our brothers and sisters and humanity in, in, in fighting against these kind of inequalities. I mean, it is clear that, you know, when we see something wrong that we're supposed to correct, if we cannot do it, you know, physically, that we should do it verbally. If we cannot do it verbally, then we should reject it in our heart. So, I wanna thank all of you and every one of you who have come forward and, and, you know, to, to work in this project. I will be there for you if you guys ever need me, please let me know and I'll send Brother Dane to do the work. No, alhamdulillah, you have, you'll have me as a supporter. And, you know, so Brother Dane is right, Muslim Association of Virginia is a benchmark when it comes to civic leadership and voice for the Muslim, you know, needs. And, you know, we have always been there, we have, you know, represented Muslim community at, you know, local level, state level, and somewhat national level as well. And so I am so glad that, you know, this is probably the first such task force that was created in our area. And I would really like for you to be successful so we can share our success with other Muslim communities so they can replicate this as well. So I'm, I'm going to keep quiet now and let you guys carry on. I just wanna thank each and every one of you from the bottom of my heart. Jazakumullah khair.
Thank you brother.
Yes, thank you very much. So, we also have.
More board members.
Yeah, I saw Umar, Umar, can you unmute and wave to us? Umar, Fazi?
Salaam alaikum, I'm here, I'm waving my hand.
Okay, if there's another board member, can you unmute and wave? I think we, I've got everybody.
I think so.
Alright, so, I'd just like to lay some ground rules. We're gonna have Q and A and you need to unmute and wave your hand or if you see, if you're, if you can't unmute, I mean, unvideo yourself, then if you go down at the bottom of your screen, over to the right, you see reactions and there's a clap hand and there was a raised hand. You can raise your hand using that and I will call on you and have you unmute. Now, all of you, just for thirty, thirty seconds to a minute, we'd like to get a screenshot of people who have joined in. So, those of you, we're asking you for, on, on the count of three, to unvideo yourself so that we can take a screenshot, alright? One, two, three, as many people as possible, can you unscreen, unvideo yourself? And it'll only take, once we get more than, yeah, keep coming, we wanna get a screenshot. So, Rami's getting a screenshot, Abdul Ahad Farooq, hopefully you're getting a screenshot. Yes, alright, can we have a few more? Maggie, can we see you Maggie? Keisha? Sheraz, Halima, can you just for a minute, Umar? Alright, so is it done, Rami?
Inshallah, we'll, we'll work with this.
Okay, alright, thank you very much. So we're now going to take questions. Did you say one sec? They are all with black again, brother?
Got it, I got it.
You got it, alhamdulillah. I'd like you, you can either raise your hand and, for me, you know, y'all all seeing me, so when you see me now at the masjid, you know I'm Sister Talibah, you can come up and say, I salaam alaikum, but I would love to put your face with your name. So when you ask a question, if possible, I know some of you are driving, I want you to stay safe. But if possible, if you're sitting at home and you've got a question, can, can we see you? So we can start getting to know one another. Alright, who's got a question?
Or comment.
Yeah. Salaam alaikum. Aisha, okay, Usman, I heard you, I saw Aisha's hand first, so I'm gonna let her speak. Are you clapping or you wanna talk? We can't hear you, you're unmuted.
Phone is on mute, Aisha.
I'd like to ask a question.
Okay, and then Mohammed, you're second. Yes, go ahead.
Salaam alaikum.
Waalaikum salam.
Brother Omar and Brother Diane, I greatly appreciate, you know, you speaking about this important issue and bringing to light and talking about the difficult, starting the difficult talk as we call it. And I really appreciate you guys doing this and putting together this task force. Now, as a brown woman, I, and I know there's many people at the masjid that would also like to know, how do we become the best allies we can?
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, alhamdulillah, that's a fantastic question. So, I'll, I'll use this as an opportunity to kinda talk about the structure of the, of the task force. What we did was we created this steering group, which is, the people, many of the people who are on, you see right here today, there are a few that are not right now. But then we're gonna have a wider task force, which is going to be everybody and anybody, small or big. There's so much work to do in terms of researching legislative issues, protesting and demonstrations, we have a component for that, to deal with that aspect because we want this, the reason why we like this task force name, because we want something that's action oriented, not a committee that's just sitting around. So, we got, we need people to help us on all issues of policy, of all issues of helping to write things, of being available to represent us in various forums, to contribute funds and money, time, someone to help us figure out what our insignia will be. I mean, helping us to create a webpage and to manage that. You know, people who are gonna come and support us on the legislative activities, do the research necessary so that we know what's the best course in action that we as Muslim Association of Virginia and as the anti-racism task force wanna take. So, I mean, everything, small and large, will be involved. Our plan is to have like the task force meeting like once a month with the entire elements of people to come and kinda give summaries of what we're doing, what we've done, what we're planning. And so, everything from good advice by text, by email, by telephone calls, to more complicated things of running things or managing things or managing people is, is, is welcome Sister Aisha. And I know you're out there on the, on the front lines doing some battling and, and it includes issues especially relating to anti-blackness, but it also includes issues related to anti-immigration issues and other general anti-racism type policies. So, thank you for the work that you're already doing and we, we hope that you will be a partner with us in that.
Inshallah, thank you.
Thank you for your questions, Sister Aisha. And for those who don't know her, I'd just like to let you know, as Dane said, she's out in the forefront in our community in Prince William County advocating for justice for everybody. And I think she was one of the ones who spearheaded Lights for Justice, which was at the McCourt Building about four Sundays ago. So thank you very much. Mohammed, Usman?
Talibah, can I ask?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Brother Omar. I would love to hear from you as also.
Well, well, just to, just to, to add on to Brother Dane's point, you know, just, just come as you are and bring your talents. I mean, like for example, we have on the task force, I don't wanna put her on the spot, but Sister Afra. And the thing that was so fascinating with her is that her background is on workplace dynamics and, and things like that. So, there's education that, that, and, and, and I guess approaches that can be applied in the workplace towards identifying and, you know, and dismantling any, any equal practices and things like that. So if you have specific talents or specific, you know, skill sets that you can bring to the table that we may not be aware of, that, that is, that is a, a major key. Another thing is even with your children, I mean, you know, the education of your children is a key because that's the future generation. And, 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 and the history of the African-American experience is very deep and, 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 and maybe even self-educating. You know, what we learn at school is, is trivial, to be honest with you, in terms of, you know, you know, we, 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 we look at, you know, Edison is venting a light bulb, light bulb, but the carbon filament was made by a black person. I mean, there's so many things that, that can enrich the negative connotations that are associated with black folks in the media and otherwise. Those are, are, are great opportunities as well.
Well, I look forward to being the best ally I can and I hope these conversations will also make the rest of everyone listening and who this gets to and the message that we send out there to also bring about these allies that can be what you need them to be.
Alright, thank you. Mohammed?
Salaam alaikum everyone. I actually had a, first I just wanted to say, Brother Dane, Sister Talibah, Brother Umar, all the leadership on the task force, you guys are to be commended. You know, inshallah, may Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala make you guys successful, make this easy for you. First and foremost, you have, the first thing you ask for, Brother Dane, are the was. Inshallah, you have them from myself, my family. No problem, and, and, and that's the least we can do, right? You are absolutely right. Let's, let's, those the was are very powerful, so let's do that as a community. If we can't do anything else, let's at least make the wa. And my, my question was similar to Sister Aisha's. You know, I was gonna ask about the structure, kind of the timeline and, you know, see how we can get involved. So thank you, I appreciate you already kind of answering that. So, I look forward to being on the next call. And then the, the next comment, also for folks that are not aware, I'm one of the Human Rights Commissioners for Prince William County. I represent the Coles District and I represent Dottle Nood and, and Mav on, on the Human Rights Council. So, you know, if there's something that I need to bring up, take away, communicate back because that is a, you know, judicial law enforcing committee within the Prince William County. I'm more than happy to, you know, take that back to the council, you know, from, from Mav or from this task force. So I'm, I'm happy to be that liaison because, you know, we do have that opportunity. We're doing great things here at Mav with the task force. I think we're doing good stuff with the commission. So I think if we kind of keep that dialogue open, use me as a liaison. Inshallah, we can be more impactful and, you know, maybe get our voice heard and, and more movement made across the county. So feel free to, you know, touch base with me offline and we can, we can discuss in detail like how I can be of assistance as long as I'm on the commission, because it is an appointment, appointed position, right? So as long as I'm there, let's, let's see whatever I can do to help you guys with, with the task force.
Absolutely, masha Allah. Thank you so much, Brother Usman. And I'm sorry I forgot to mention that you, you are on that commission as well. I, I think what will happen is Brother will probably invite you to one of our steering group meetings if you're able to attend that and just give you an opportunity to chat with us and us to chat with you about what, what the possible strategic plans we could have in terms of utilizing your position and that, and our opportunity to see what we can do with that. So we'll definitely take you up on that.
No problem, alhamdulillah, inshallah, anytime.
Thank you. Is there another question or a comment?
Yes, Sister Talibah?
Yes, and I heard somebody else too. So one second, who's that other person?
That was Imam Abdul Ahad.
Okay, so we'll do Rafi and then we'll go back to Imam Abdul Ahad.
No, Imam, go ahead first, please.
Actually, I was just pointing that you have your hand raised.
Yeah, your picture, go ahead.
So, my question, Brother Umar was addressing the issue of education, right? So if you all remember a few years back, when the, the Prince William County Port Clerk Deputy had made a comment about what contribution of a Muslim American towards the fabric of the United States. Back then, you know, a lot of people did not know what contribution the Muslims have made toward the, you know, creation of the United States. You know, more than 20% of the slaves that came in were Muslims, right? So Muslims and its religion of Islam is nothing foreign to, to, to America. It has been here. And, and the, the thing is, this subject is not taught. Uh, it has been here. And, and the, the, the thing is, this subject is not taught in our school system, right? When we, uh, I remember when going through middle school, going through high school, uh, they never brought that up, you know? Uh, in the history classes and stuff. So I think, uh, my suggestion with task force would also be, maybe you guys have already discussed this and are already working on it. If you are, then discard my, this idea, but I think there needs to be some educational component of it as well. Where we're teaching this like, you know, in Sunday school, uh, and also holding seminars. Uh, you know, partnering with the, the Muslim, uh, museum, uh, brother, um, I forget the name of the brother.
He's already on our list, yes.
So I, I was thinking maybe doing workshops, like on quarterly basis. Or, you know, how, however you guys choose to do it. But there needs to be a component where we are educating our community as well on the contribution of early Muslims here in, uh, you know, in the United States. Uh, and what their contributions have been. Because we are totally, uh, you know, I started reading up on this and trying, you know, after that incident happened. But before then, I, I didn't have much knowledge either. So that, that's just an idea.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, we will take in consideration all those ideas, they're excellent ideas. And let me just mention two things regarding education. Omar, you touched a nerve, Alhamdulillah. One, even the Constitution of the United States is based on, you know that Thomas Jefferson was the main writer. And then the other guys helped him edit it. But he had a Quran, alright? Jefferson Quran, and it's in the Library of Congress. There are Islamic principles, like the, the right to have witnesses for, uh, a trial when you're accused. There are lots of things that are in the Constitution that really came out of the Quran and the Islamic civilization. Um, and Islam is so important that, um, if you ever go to the Library of Congress, to the old building where they have, uh, this inside part with a dome, Islam, they have mathematics and some other, um, sci- science and some other things, but they have Islam on the dome of the Library of Congress. Why? It's because Islam helped bring civilization. So, and there's a pic, there's this, um, a mural, a stone mural in the Supreme Court with Mohammed, because, uh, he was considered a, a lawgiver, alright? And there's a little chiseled veil, so you can't actually see any, um, features of him. But I'd like to, if I may, take a minute to talk about moms and dads. When my son was, uh, at Islamic Sunday School, and he'd been going for years. One day after prayer, while I was getting my things ready to, uh, go home, this little pretty little girl comes up to him and says, "Are you a Muslim?" And he, being trained by his mother, uh, to be polite, he says, "Sure, are you? Yes." And she says, "Where are you from?" He says, "I'm from here, from Virginia." And so he asked her, "Where is she from?" And she says, "Oh, I'm from Afghanistan." And he said, "Oh, that's really good." But here it is, you're talking about a five-year-old asking my son, an African American, was he a Muslim? And he's right there in Sunday school. We were either lining up for prayer or just finished prayer. Our, our children shouldn't be asking other children in Sunday school, "Are you a Muslim?" Alright, parents, our children shouldn't be asking other kids who are at Sunday school, "Are you a Muslim?"
Yeah, true.
And second, she didn't identify herself. No problem. She didn't identify herself as an American. She was little, five-year-old and it'd already been drummed in her head, Afghanistan, which Alhamdulillah, it's great to acknowledge, uh, where your roots are. But this, this kid was like five years old, alright? So parents, please keep that in mind, alright? If your children were born here, they're Americans with roots in whatever country you came from, alright? Who else has a question?
Sister Talibah, I just want to
Hold on, I, I'm gonna say something to that. I'm a US-born Afghan. First of all, yes, our community is rife with anti-blackness, okay? I'm gonna admit that. And I've spent the last eighteen years of my life fighting in the streets, organizing, protesting. But I refuse to take on settler colonial identities, hyphenated American identities. This identity has been imposed upon your ancestors and me, and this is occupied indigenous land. Please stop telling us we're American. Please stop imposing these colonial borders and nation-state identities on us. I, I definitely agree, anti-blackness needs to be dismantled in refugee communities coming here on occupied native land. But please do not enforce settler colonial identities of American upon us. Thank you.
Then, then I understand what you're saying and let's be human beings to each other, alright? So, I'm just pointing out something I thought for a little kid. So let's, we're all humans and let's move forward from there.
Thank you so
I mean, my motherland is currently occupied by the US military. It's been eighteen plus years.
Sharing this screen. Assalamualaikum, this is your brother Dane Johnson. Uh, coming back to you, uh, because we had to end the meeting early due to a hacking attack uh, from someone. Uh, apologize for, uh, the video and sounds that were displayed. Uh, hopefully we'll be able to correct that, uh, going forward in the future and prevent people from joining us and, and disrupting us in the program. Uh, I want to thank you all for your participation, uh, your dialogue, your conversation with us and the Anti-Racism Task Force of Muslim Association of Virginia. We really appreciate and value your input and your participation and your collaboration with us on this. Uh, we will have many more dialogues going forward uh, to help us during this time and, and this difficult situation. Uh, we hope and pray that you will participate with us in helping to combat, uh, this grave injustice uh, that has been perpetrated against black people in this country as well as to support us in eradicating and, uh, defending against all kinds of racism, uh, in this country. So, please join us, uh, if you may, uh, going forward. Tell your friends, your family and others. Uh, it'll be an education for all of us. Uh, and we hope that Allah will help us in this, in this process going forward. On that note, I'd like to end the dua. We ask Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala uh, to help us, to guide us, to protect us, to safeguard us. We ask that He give us energy and enthusiasm in this pursuit for justice. We ask that He support us, He love us, and He give us preference in fighting this battle and hoping, helping us to communicate well to our community as well as to, uh, the rest of the country and the world for that matter. A'udzubillahi bin faytaanir regime, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wal afsi ri innal insana lafi xosr, illa ladzina amanu wa amanu salihati, wa tawasabil haqi wa tawasabil sabr.